Welcome, everybody. Could I make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes of August 10th, please?
Chairman, I make a motion to waive the reading of the minutes from our meeting in August 10th.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right, opposed, so move. Under tonight's whole business, JBC Architects LLC for variance to construct a three-story rear addition, third-floor addition, the existing two-story, single-family home, convert the single-family home into a three-family home on the premise 38 Holmes Street, is the applicant and their representative here?
Yes.
You have the floor, Bonnie.
I, um, I revised the plan, so I did a little research.
Yep.
First of all, do I need to sworn in?
Yes.
You swear to the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Thank you.
Thanks. So, um, I revised the plan based on, yeah, I made the FAR to meet the zoning requirement, open space, and I spoke to Jay, so our parking work, our parking, number of parking spaces were two, so we made three of the variances to meet.
Right.
So we're seeking for setbacks.
So you have six now, correct?
I'm sorry, six parking spaces.
Yes.
Yes.
Yep.
So, we moved the addition, first floor, and have the parking open on the ground floor.
Yep.
And keeping three-story, three-family. Yeah.
Is there any questions at the board, Mr. Cabas?
No questions.
Uh, Mr. O'Brien?
Just that they checked the turning radius, that was one of our concerns, that works?
Uh, turning radius, I widen it. On the, on the new addition is no problem, but on the existing building, we cut out this corner, too. To make it flow better.
See the angle when they cut out, yeah?
All right, thank you.
All right, uh, Mr. Chin?
No questions.
Mr. Hemel?
No questions, as long as you got those six parking spaces and the turning radius works.
Right. Let's see if we want to speak to anyone else with the new changes. Anyone who wants to speak in favor? First call? Star nine, or a hand wave?
There should be, if you're on a laptop, a reactions button for the virtual hand raise. If you're calling in on a phone, it would be star nine, or just turn on your screen, give us a wave, or send the host to chat, thank you.
Thank you, John. Second call? Is there anyone that wants to speak?
No hands.
Third call, call out power of the hearing closed, no new correspondence. Is, uh, is there anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided, anyone, first call? Second call?
No hands.
Third call closed. I'll be voting in favor, since they did everything that was looked at. Mr. Cabas?
I'm voting in favor also.
Mr. O'Brien?
Likewise.
Mr. Chin?
In favor.
Mr. Hemel?
In favor.
Could I have a motion, please, Mr. Cabas?
Chairman, amount number 21-34, JCBT Architects LLC for variance to construct a three-story rear addition, the third-floor addition to the existing two-story, single-family home and convert from a single-family home to a three-family home on the premises numbered 38 Holmes Street. I make a motion to grant the variance.
Second.
On the motion, CNN, Madam Clerk, can we have a voice vote? Madam Clerk, can I have a voice vote, please?
Mike Colvis?
Yes.
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Uh, yes.
John Hemel?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
Marty Akins?
Yes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Further into tonight's business, ZBA 202142, you and you, I apologize, for a special permit floodplain variance finding to construct a one-story addition in a roof deck on the premise number 70 Carlisle, is an applicant and their representative here?
You can go ahead and unmute yourself if you're here.
Hello? Where are we? Is there an applicant here? Call that back later. Further into tonight's business, Lane Goldberg for variance to construct a single-family home on a vacant lot on the premise number zero Gertrude, is the applicant and their representative here?
Yes, good afternoon, my name is Lane Goldberg.
Are you an attorney?
Yes, I'm an attorney.
Okay. Uh, you have the floor, why don't you tell us what you did with any changes or no changes? How'd you make out with the neighbors?
Yeah, so last, we were here about two weeks ago, um, and there were a couple of things that the board had suggested, we made the change to take off the deck in the back. Um, the plans were submitted to the ZBA online and then delivered to the ZBA as well, so each of you should have a copy of those new architectural plans, and I can share those on the screen if you'd like.
Yes.
What we did was, um, we took off-
Why don't you talk when you put it on the screen, so everyone can see what the changes are?
Okay.
Jonathan, if you could let him in?
He's all set.
Yep, I think it's letting me. All right, so up on the screen right now is the, um, this is the new site plan?
Yeah.
See if I can zoom in a little bit. You can see on the back, I'm sorry, this is the wrong-
Excuse me, Lane, that's the old site plan, the new site plan at the end of the joint.
Let me get you the new one, it's right here. So, uh, on the, on the back, there is no longer a deck, there's just a balcony that's coming out. Um, and then you can see this on the architectural plans as well. Let me just zoom out a little bit, so you can see that. So, uh, you know, that was the, you know, the direction of the, the board wanted to see that. There was also some other, um, one other issue that on the front of the house, the windows, uh, right here, they did not look the same as the windows on the left side of the house, so we, uh, designed those to look symmetrical with the other windows. Um, the other task that the board wanted us to do was to speak with the attorney for the neighbors. Um, I did speak with the attorney for the neighbors, and I think that we're, um, you know, I, I would say that we're at the point of, you know, they don't want to see anything there.
Yep.
And we want to build something there, so, uh, there's not going to be any settlement with them, um, they, you know, they didn't suggest any changes to the, you know, what they wanted was really basically nothing, um, to be built there, so we're not going to do that.
Okay. Any questions on the board, I see you did everything that the board asked. Uh, say, Mr. Cabas, any question?
I have, I have no question.
Um, Mr. O'Brien?
The only, the only thing we need to do here is just a front setback, is that correct? Everything else is, is, is there?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chin?
I'm all set, I, I, um, I'm happy with the revisions.
Mr. Hemel?
Yeah, the front looks much better, much more symmetrical, great looking.
Thank you. Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor with the changes? First call? Second call? Third call closed, no new correspondence, anyone opposed or undecided?
Chairman, Frederick Castleman, on behalf of the Butters?
Yep, Fred, you have the floor.
All right, thank you, again, for the Butters, Christine Foul, Robin Anderson, Christopher Anderson, um, ten Gertrude, eight Gertrude, and four Gertrude.
Yep.
Again, as Council said, we, we did speak, we're unable to reach any sort of compromise, uh, and, and I won't rehash, I know that my, um, partner was here at the last meeting, and he, and he went over the arguments, and we submitted a written argument as well.
Right.
And there's just one thing my client did ask, they, they sent in their own submission today, it was a PDF, PowerPoint document, was that received?
Yes.
Thank you, they just wanted me to confirm that.
Yep, we did get that, it was all sent out.
Excellent, thank you.
Okay, so-
Again, I won't, I won't belabor the argument that was written, but, you know, the applicant's relying on a topography soil condition argument as grounds for the variance, uh, which is the, the first prerequisite for a variance, and, um, there's, there's just nothing on the record to show how the soil and topography of this property are unique from the other land within this district, which is the prerequisite under 40A. I mean, there's nothing unique about this property's topography and soil compared to the neighboring lots. Uh, it's, the whole neighborhood has sort of these wetlands and marshes in the rear, they slope back towards them, uh, so there's, there's nothing, again, nothing unique that, and I'd suggest that would satisfy the requirement, the first prerequisite, um, uh, to grant variance. You know, further, regarding the variance, is it derogating from the purpose of the bylaw? We, this, the property was purchased after the bylaw changed, or at least this application was filed, there's, there's no, no building on there, and, you know, the city of Quincy set these standards for frontage and side setbacks, and I, I understand this is just for a front setback, but, you know, the purpose of these, based on the bylaws, is to secure, and I'm paraphrasing a little, from safety, from fire, provide adequate light, prevent overcrowding, encourage open space, you know, and by placing this, um, structure, you know, 11 feet from the road, and, and probably in already a somewhat crowded neighborhood, you're, in my opinion, you're derogating from the purpose of that bylaw of the open space and, and safety, um, by granting a variance, uh, in this instance, so, um, again, the, the neighbors, and you heard from some of them, you know, last hearing, are, are just in the Butters, along with some other neighbors, are, are against this, um, application, and, and we'd request that the board deny the, um, the request for a variance.
Thank you, Council.
And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else opposed or undecided? First call? Second call?
Put your hand up.
Uh, one thing I want to say-
Well, Marty, I think you have one person here.
Kathy, hold up one second, uh, is there anything here from the counselor? He told me, he left me a message saying he's sending something in. Going to send in a letter? Yes, I just want-
He told me, he said he was going to-
Yeah, he told me he's going to send a letter, I just want to make sure if we got it before, if not, we'll put it in the record, I don't know, I don't see it yet. Uh, Kathy?
John, uh, John Walsh?
John, you want to take a note, please?
Sure, absolutely.
You swear to the truth, the hope truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Thank you.
I do.
Go ahead, John.
Uh, John Walsh, 15 Gertrude Ave, one of the Butters, um, I guess I'm opposed to this particular structure on a different reason, looking at the, the slope of the land, the erosion over the years, and the potential damage to some of the large trees holding up the slope, I, I just think over time, it's going to be detrimental to that, that whole embankment, um, so, that's, I just wanted to voice my opinion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Walsh.
Yeah.
Is there anyone else, second call? Third call? Call out power of the hearing closed, we, we can't find the letter that, uh, he just sent me a text saying he was going to send in something this morning, but I haven't seen it, so there's no letter from him.
He might have sent it to Noreen.
He might have sent it to Noreen, and, and, and like I said, our clerk is, is out, if there is one there, I'll put it in the record, make sure, uh, if anyone wants it, it would be in the record. Uh, you know, I, I, here's the way I look at this, I look at this as this 22,000 square feet of land there, the guys look for a front variance, and if you give them the front variance that's in line with the rest of the houses, that house fits, even took off his beautiful deck up, going, going back, so there will be no erosion in the back, worrying about that embankment being eroded upon father neighbors. So, with those in mind, I'm going to be voting yes. Mr. Cabas, comments?
Well, I, you know, it's, it's funny because it was pointed out to me that, uh, back in 2012, I guess, I was the only one in favor of putting something there, um, but I guess I still am, so, uh, I'll be voting in favor.
And, Mr. O'Brien?
Uh, the same with me, if it was anything beyond the, um, the setback in the front, and it looks like the Conservation Commission, uh, made some plantings requirements for the slope, so I would, I would expect that the erosion back there should be minimal. I don't know, I'm not a, uh, environmental person or a jawline person, but I think the precautions have been taken to save it, so I'll be voting in favor.
Okay, Mr. Chin?
I'm in favor.
And where's Mr. Hemel, Mr. Hemel?
I'll be in favor, I agree with Marty, it's a 22,000 square foot lot, there's way sufficient open space in the rear, Conservation Committee put a lot of work into, uh, conserving that slope, so I'll be voting in favor.
Have a motion, Mr. Cabas?
This, this, Chairman, amount number 21-46, uh, Lane Goldberg for a variance to, uh, zero Gertrude Ave, and I make a motion to, uh, grant the variance, I don't have exactly in front of me what you requested, because it's not on my agenda, but-
Front, front yard setback.
Yes, right, front yard setback, grant the variance on front yard setback.
Seconded?
Seconded.
Madam Clerk, can we have a voice vote?
Mike Cabas?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
John Hemel?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
Marty Akins?
Yes. Okay, further into tonight's business.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, and new business, ZBA 2153, Hardy Man Design Group for variance finding and constructing one-half story building. Existing non-conforming lot received variances in case number Z1940 for one and a half story building, the premises 186 Essex Street in Quincy, is the applicant or the representative here?
Uh, right here.
You're an attorney, are you, Chief?
Uh, no, I'm not.
Could you swear in, please?
You swear to the truth, the hope truth, nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
All right, let, before I give you the floor, here, here's my two cents on this. Since, since COVID come in, you still have that valid one and a half story building that you could build, 10 feet in each side. Correct?
Yes.
All right, so, I think the board, I was the only one that voted no on that, but the board thought about it, and, and, and what they decided was, let's make it a smaller house, you're subdividing a lot which the neighbors did not want, let's give them a one and a half story house because of, there's all rock and ledge back there, correct?
Uh, some outcrops, we see.
All right, so, and they were worried about the flooding and everything else down there, so, so they did that for you, but you come back here now, after getting that from the board, and still can get a valid permit, and you want to build a two and a half story house, I think it's really an insult, it's an insult to this board, what they've done, to turn around and then want to make it a two and a half story house, the problems that were down there, and the board even voted against the neighborhood for you. Maybe, maybe you could explain to me what happened and why we are where we are today?
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, can I, uh, share the screen, please?
Sure. Any comments on those comments, or you're just going to show us your plans?
Uh, well, actually, make the footprints smaller and more setback on the rear, so I think it's a compromise to, um-
All right, show it up.
So, um, I'm just going to skip some of this front end, this is the old history, um, of, of the properties, and the board well aware of the situation, this is the site print that was approved, um, back in 2019, and, um, the building, so I'm going to jump right to the proposed print. So what we are showing here is, um, I can show you what the, the, the red dotted line is more like the overlay of the approved site print back in, um, 2019. Yes, what the, what the owner, the current owner, proposing to do is reduce that footprint, push the building up, so, um, in exchange to that, is looking for a, uh, two and a half story building, up higher in the front, and more setback to the, to the rear. The rear setback is, it was approved at 20, uh, on the, on the old site plan with 27.4. Now, the new, the new proposed site print, we have 39 foot setback, which, which is at a, uh, almost 12 feet difference, there's more open, the site will have more open space, there's a 10, 10 by-
Isn't that a four-foot difference?
Uh, I'm sorry, it's a four-foot difference, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I'm just re, reading the wrong notes, I'm sorry. So it's, it's more, um, no, it's-
All right, go ahead.
Oh, it's, it's, it's 12 foot difference, it's, we deals from-
It was 27, right?
27 to 39.
Oh, 39, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, so we tried to open up more open space in the rear, and, um, you know, it's greater distance to, to the rear neighbor, and we're doing all the requirement that the, uh, the last revise, uh, I mean, the, the approval, um, so the site is going to be 25% more open space on the site, and we do, um, realize there, there was a drainage concern, so we're still capturing all the roof runoff and putting into underground system, and there is existing 10 by 10 concrete slab on the site, we are going to remove that, and so that's going to be further reduce the, uh, runoff, and the building is, uh, because of potential ledge on the site, so it's going to be no basement, um, neither. The building is going to be a modular construction, so basically, we build a foundation, and it's going to be box come in and, uh, assemble the building, so it's very quick constructions, you know, the building will be done within a few months, so I think the, the time of the construction is going to help to mitigate some of the, the construction impact concern of the neighbor. And, you know, let me just do the site print.
What's the height of your house there, the new one?
The height of the house is, is 33.7.
And you know you have a one and a half story on the left, and you've got a one and a half story on the right of that house, and in the back of it, it is, the way that the topography goes, it's like a one-story in the back. So this enormous building is going to be standing in the middle of those three. That's why I think we talked about the one and a half story, to make it fit with the neighborhood, you're up another three, three and a half, four feet on your neighbor on the left, on that lot, and he's got a one and a half story, you had a one and a half story, you're probably still going to be 10 feet above him.
So on the screen here, we also did a 3D model overlay of the, uh, bird eye view of the, uh, properties, and as you can see, we realized the rear building is a one-story building, but the height of the building is, the, the gray of the building of the rear lot is five foot higher than the, um, access street, so it's not going to be a full story difference on the, on the, on the height.
Of course it is, it's lower, you're lower in the back, and it's only a one-story building, it's lower.
Well, it is going to be higher, I'm not saying it's, it's not going to be a full story, I'm just saying.
All right.
And just to finish the, um, presentation, this is the kind of sample of the building, how it looks like, it's not exactly the same, uh, we have hardy print, um, uh, on the exterior, black trim windows, um, me, uh, metal roof in front of the garage, it's going to be a white picket fence all around the, um, um, property around. As I was just explaining, the, the gray difference is about five feet between the, um, the rib of the building and the front of the building, so it's going to be a five foot difference in between, you can see, this is more like a section between the two, two buildings. And at the last, also, I want to, I emailed this to Noreen, I'm not sure if the board received this, we also get, um, uh, letter of support from, uh, a lot of the neighbors as well, um, all the green address shown on the map here, you've got 13 of them signed the, um, letter of support, and, uh, out of this, out of the map, uh, we have added six, so we have 19 all together, all together, letter of support of this project. Um, and these are just the letter, I'm not going to go through all of them, and I understand the, the, uh, Butters submit a, uh, package to the zoning board today by email, um, I just, I just want to, um, again, I just want to point out that the solar study is, is a little skewed, I'm not saying it's wrong, but it's a little skewed, it's not, it's not showing the gray difference between the two properties. And the rear property is five foot high, if you see the, the shadow study, um, the red line is pretty much the, the existing gray of the rear properties, and that is only on September 21st, uh, 4:00 to 5:00 PM, the majority of the time, it's not going to be in the shadow on, on that property. And, uh, that's basically sum up the presentations, and want to open to the board for any questions?
Well, you have three diamonds on the front of this two and a half story, you know, I feel offensive, I really do, that the board gave you something for that property and you come back. I don't have any questions, because I'm dead set against it, and I think the neighborhood should all be against, to tell you the truth, you had a, you have a thing, you have a permit for one and a half, just so you know, where my vote's going to be on this, that I'm definitely going to say no, and I'm going to say, go build what you can build by rights, because of, of, of this whole thing, you came, you, you, you asked for something, you got it, and now you come right back before it's even built or anything, and want to change it all to a two and a half story building, because money's involved, that's what this is about, money, plain and simple, so, I have no question, I have no questions, I'm just giving you my comments now to make it quick and easy the way I feel, because I voted no against the first project, it probably shouldn't have been built here.
Can I just-
Looking back, yeah.
Can I just say?
I thought you would not.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, the, this property was changed hands last year, and, um, my client is building for himself, you know, he's, that this is going to be his retired home, he live in Quincy right now, he just wants us to, uh, he live in Victory Road, he just want to move here, so it's not, it's not going to be building for profit, he's building it for his own, he talked to all the neighbors, um, so, just wanted to point that out.
No, I know that, but, but he ain't going to live there for 100 years, but that house is going to be there for 200 years, so, or 100 anyway, anyway, Mr. Cabas, any questions?
I have none, uh, Mr. Chairman, I, um, also, um, I, I think you're pretty much summing up my feelings about this whole thing, that to, uh, start, you know, uh, I'm supposed to be asking questions, but I'm not like, so, I, I don't have any question.
I know, I just think you, you made a deal with that person for a property, so she could build a small house, and it was supposed to be for someone in her family, by the way, and then she sells it, so who knows, who knows, right, who does know? Uh, Mr. O'Brien?
I, yeah, no comments at this time, I'll comment when we close and vote.
Sure. Mr. Chin?
I do not have any comments at this time.
Mr. Hemel?
Now, I thought it was an accommodation last time, it one and a half story, so that kind of lets you know where I stand. Thank you.
All right, thank you. If we could clear the screen, is there anyone that wants to speak in favor? Any person want to speak in favor? Lynch?
No, 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 he, he, we're very opposed.
Oh, I will get to anyone that's opposed. Uh, anyone- Uh, anyone want to speak in favor for this project? First call. Second call. Um, before I call third call, you said a supplemental list was given to us. I will put it in the record. I don't have it here right now, but maybe the clerk, maybe it went to her. If you sent it today, then maybe we didn't get it, but it'll get in the record.
Yeah, I understand she's on vacation.
Right, right. Thank you. Uh, any new correspondence? No new correspondence? Yeah, the first one. Thanks. Ever let it here August ninth, we've been using reference project and have no comments again. So is there anyone opposed or undecided? Could the Lynch please take a an oath, please?
You all swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you guys.
I do.
We do.
Thank you.
You're up. Name an address for the record, please.
I'm Sally Lynch, one eighty Essex Street, the property immediately next door.
Okay, you have the floor. You have the floor.
Obviously, um, we're feeling exactly the same way Mr. Akins has we spoke in opposition to anything being built there since way back, what was it, thirteen, fourteen years ago? Uh, when the property was originally up for being divided. I make a difference, but in pushing it back, you're actually going to be going higher on the peaks of the land. So you have a thirty three point seven foot house on top of what by by pushing it back.
Time out.
As the height of the house.
Lynch, hold on. We're getting a lot of feedback. Can you get a little closer to your computer maybe and try that? Not not right. Yeah, I just it's it's something's happening.
I'm not sure it's so much its feedback. It is their connection. Uh, I just put I just put them on mute to see maybe if they could they could fix it a little bit. They can go ahead and unmute themselves.
All right.
I use is that that we are in Swanum and we do get terrible energy. So I apologize.
No, no, no. We're just trying to figure out what's going on because it's going whoa, 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 whoa. All right. You're up. Try that.
Whoa, 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 whoa. Close up and personal. I mean, so the fact that the house is thirty three point seven feet is going to put it higher on the land as the land is already the topography as Mr. Akins referred to is already much higher than either ninety three or our property. So it's going to raise it up even more. So the open space isn't the issue with us. It's the size of the house and the fact that the drainage is just going to be worse. Everything we fought against four point five story house is going to be compounded and there's just no need for it. We just we just can't see any of support. You won't see anybody that abuts this property having approved of it. They are all people who are slightly removed from what will what will be one eighty six. We're resigned to the fact that a house is going to go there because we know that was approved. But there's no need for it to be a two point five.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lynch, want to say something?
I just have a couple of things to add. First of all, as far as the sunlight goes, it's specific from our property line. During the midday is the sun is going to be low on the southern edge and that house is going to block instead of sky sky view. I mean, it's it's going to be hard to see the sky from beside the house with that property. Another thing, I don't know if it's really relevant.
I think the east sun, the east sun, as it's coming around to the southwest, when it's coming. I don't know. What are you gonna? Yeah, you're going to be blacked out.
We are going to be blacked out as as will ninety three.
Right.
The other issue I have is whether or not it's relevant, I'm not sure, but this is a single family owner that wants to build this house. And I'm just not sure what the future goes for that house. As far as what could be, who could be, who could defend that house? My one person would not probably
Thank you. Is there anyone else that like to speak? Opposed or undecided?
You have Citizen Rotafeld and Kathy Brink and I believe Hannah Cassidy as well.
Go ahead, John. John?
Got me. John Rotafield, sixty two Granwell Road. I swear to tell the truth. Basically, um, I just wanted to point out that let's just say if you grant this variance for them to build two and a half stories, nothing's going to prevent them from coming back to build another big addition on the back of this house. So the house looks way too big and out of place and definitely overshadowing the neighbors. I mean, I I couldn't tell from the picture, but what are the side setbacks? Are they asking for a variance on the left and on the right?
Yep, ten.
So I mean, that's, you know, that's what, when you look at the zoning code, if you look at the, you know, the business C, which doesn't make any sense.
John, John, we're in a residency. Let's just stick.
No, no, but I'm just saying part of the part of the reason why there are setbacks is because of the shadows. And so if you want to go, if you want to go closer to the border, you can't go higher. You can't do both. I mean, that's like, that's like saying that's totally against the zoning variances. So if you are going to grant the zoning variances, you can't give relief in both areas. So the relief you gave before, you probably shouldn't have even given that relief according to what you're saying right now. So bottom line is that, um, you know, they're asking for too much here and I'm I'm against the ask. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Uh, Kathy.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
Um, my client asked me that he would like to withdraw. He'd like to work with the neighbor.
I I'll tell you what, let me finish. People have things to say tonight. I want to hear. Kathy Brink, take an oath, please.
They're good.
You're good.
Um, I won't belabor everything that has already been said. My husband and I both oppose the building of this house. Um, I sent materials into the board. I also sent a copy to the owner of the property. Um, essentially, our our concern is what has been addressed, which is the air and the light into our property. The lynchers are on one side of the house. We're on the back of the house. During the day, the lynchers won't have any light. At in the afternoon, in the evening, we won't have any light. Um, uh, Mr. Chin says that the that our house at ninety three Ashworth is quite high. It's actually a one story home.
Exactly.
The fence that's directly behind it, that would be between our property and this this property on Essex Street is between six to seven or eight feet tall. We get varying measurements depending on where you measure it from. This house is going to sit roughly thirty feet above that fence. There's no way that our house, which is a one story house, has any chance of getting light when we have that vehement vote behind us. We've been in Swanum. We raised our three kids here. We knew about the initial request to have it split. And we knew when we bought ninety three that this board had refused to allow those people to do it. So we were very surprised when the butchers came and asked to have it split that it was allowed to be put into two undersized lots. But we also were aware of the one and a half story house that the butchers had asked. And when many people from the neighborhood came and raised concerns about the building on the slot because of the drainage, primarily because of the drainage.
Right.
That zoning request was withdrawn and we had to go through it a second time. And the way of handling that drainage was putting something on the roof to catch rainwater. We're not worried about rainwater. We're worried about this underwater drainage that we all have that run from East Swanum over or under Ashworth and down to Essex. This is a problem we have after you approve the first variance. We put in an extensive drainage system around our house because we were concerned even with a one and a half story house with them refusing to do anything with drainage other than put something to catch roof water rain that we would have some pretty substantial flooding. We also had to worry about the house at ninety three Ashworth. What was going to happen to the flooding in that house? So these concerns were all raised at the initial variance, but then it was allowed. But you guys were very specific when you wrote your opinion and your memorandum and decision in support of allowing them to build on this property. Very specific that this variance was allowed, but that the building had to be in conformance with the plot with the home that was submitted with the request for a variance. It was a one point five story house.
Correct.
The neighborhood raised concerns that the reason that they were asking this to build this this house on one eighty six Essex was not because they were building a house for their mom. She just sold her four million dollar house on Crabtree.
I know.
And so this was our concern all along. And within one year of getting granted that variance by you guys, one twenty three Crabtree was on the market. When I went in and asked them at one twenty three, what are you going to do with one eighty one eighty six Essex? I was told, we're keeping it so we can build for ourselves. After one twenty three Crabtree was sold, they then sold one eighty six Essex. This is the exact concern that we raised when they were granted the first.
Right. And they knew when they bought that they had a permit for one and a half story home.
Exactly.
Right.
Um, one of the things you don't see, they're talking about how they're making it into a smaller footprint. The concerns that we have is there's going to be a deck on the back. You can see in the drawing that there are are doors that are going to lead out onto the back. So there's obviously plans to put a deck out in the back, which will need some sort of foundation. On top of that, and bear with me because I'm not in the building trade, I teach reading to disabled students in the Quincy Public System.
Night, so.
Okay, I'll be quick. That's the third story is a livable story. It has a full sized bathroom with a closet with fifteen feet. It's a thousand square foot. It's almost bigger than the house at Ashworth. Um, if it was up to me, we'd ask you not to build at all on one eighty six Essex, but at the very least, we'd ask you to deny this this variance and uphold what was your previous ruling of a one point five story house in line with what the butchers had asked and not take this off and put this on over and over again like the butchers were able to do.
Yep. Thank you very much. Is there anyone else opposed or undecided?
Hannah Cassidy?
Hannah Cassidy?
Thank you. Yeah, I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth. You can see the sunlight coming behind me. I'm at live at ninety three Ashworth. That's the sun that's going to be blocked by a and it's not a two and a half story house. It's a three story house. And I don't want to, I'm not going to belabor the point or anything else like that, but we spend a lot of time in in our yard and my garden will go away. I mean, there's there's nothing that says that that's that's a good idea. I also want to raise the fact is that when we've got the scale drawing that you put there to say that this was to scale and the model, that was certainly not to scale. There's there the the sun, the the solar study that was done is pretty darn accurate on how much shade would come over the house on this one. And if it's going to be a retirement home, can I ask the question, why isn't there a bedroom on the first floor? Because I don't know of a single retirement home that you wouldn't plan for a first floor. Again, there are so many different things that are going on here, but I think that the the Brinks have raised it, but it's my backyard. It is literally, I have a twenty foot backyard and now suddenly I'm going to have the green monster in the backyard and I I you know, to conform with the the zoning laws that are here, we're a lot, we're a land of laws and rules and let's abide by them. If there has to be a house there, one and a half stories is fine. A three story house is unacceptable. Thank you.
Anyone else who'd like to speak opposed or undecided?
This is Richard Walsh. Can you hear me?
Richard, yeah. Could you please take an oath, Richard?
Yeah, Richard Walsh. Go ahead.
Wait a minute. Mike?
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you guys.
I do. Thank you.
Go ahead, Richard.
So I'll be brief.
Name an address for the record, please.
Pardon?
Name an address for the record.
Uh, I'm the owner.
No, name an address for the record.
Name an address. Richard Richard Walsh, one eighty six Essex Street.
You got it.
So, uh, I I'm new to the process, number one. Number two, I purchased a property on May twenty seventh. I didn't realize the the history and everything that all the abuddhas went through. Uh, I went around, I met all the neighbors, I listened to their issues and and, you know, quite frankly, I I understand them. Uh, I want to address them. And I I didn't realize this was as big of an issue that it is. Uh, based on that, uh, I I I I'm going to withdraw the the house as it exists. I'll go back to the one and a half level. Uh, you know, it's very important for me to be a good neighbor. Uh, I had nothing to do with the past. And, um, sorry, I took up your time this far to on this busy evening.
But Richard, you bought a piece of property. You didn't know it already had it had a variance on it?
Oh, no, no, I knew it had a variance, but my question was.
Read the variance. It would have told you exactly what was there.
Uh, no, no, actually, I I I read the variance and I knew it had a permit to build a one and a half level. I was just asking if I could do a two and a half level. So all it was is an ask. But I didn't understand. I didn't know the history.
You know what? And then I look at the front of it, just not to say that, Richard, but you have three dormers on the front of your house. I mean, it's a three, it's almost three stories. You know what I mean?
I I withdrew. I I'm withdrawing the
Well, maybe you're not. Maybe you're not. Maybe the board has to vote on this. That's a request by you. That don't mean it's approved automatically. The board will talk about that. We'll keep that under consideration. Thank you for your time. Further on the tonight. Is there anyone else opposed or undecided?
Have Will Cass.
Well, is it the same house, Will? Wait a minute, Will.
You gotta unmute yourself, Will.
Is this the same house, Will? You gotta unmute yourself first of all.
Unmute.
Is this the same house?
Yes.
That was just speaking?
Yes.
All right, we gotta wait because Kathy wanted to, again, second, but I wouldn't let her until everyone spoke once. Anyone else here want to speak? Second call. All right, Kathy, your husband's up, I guess.
Yeah, very quick. Um, as you can see out the back, I have light coming in the backyard in my office. I'm going to lose that when they put that monstrosity there. So we're opposed to it, period.
Thank you. Mr. Cassidy, you're up.
Actually, I'm I'm Mr. Brink, but it's
Mr. Brink, swear to tell the truth.
I I I do swear to tell the truth. I I'm going to be very brief. I just want the board to know the water problem. I'm sure that everybody talks about water. Look at the materials that we submitted. We we, um, as the owners of one oh one Crabtree and ninety three Ashworth, we combined with our prior owner, spent over forty thousand dollars trying to get our basements dry. You know, he's going to put it, the giant foundation back there, it's going to be like a plug. And it's going to be, it's going to create a problem. Just be aware of the water problem is serious. And I would, I leave you with this. Nobody spends forty thousand dollars to put French drains in their basement unless they've got a real serious not rainwater problem, but groundwater problem. And no remediation is going to change that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cassidy, you want to speak? Mr. Cassidy, did you want to speak?
He he did it ready.
I oh, I thought that was Will. I thought that was Kathy just talking. Is there anyone else? Second call? Third call, call it close. Guys, there's two issues here. First of all, we could vote on this, or we could let him withdraw it. And now that he brought this to us, there might be a decision to be made on that ten foot setback now that that he wanted before. Now we'll bring it down to one and a half. Maybe it's maybe it's like, maybe he should go to the drawboard and build whatever he can by right. To me, it was really upsetting to see this application after everything that that neighborhood went through. And he has a right to do it, but he should have looked at the background and he said he did, but he wanted a two and a half. So I guess he didn't talk to the neighbors. If he did, they they would have told him right off, no, we didn't even want the one and a half. And maybe stop this before it got here. That's just my opinion. So I know I would like to see is like deny this and let him build something that he can buy right. And that's what he bought. Not doing his homework. That's not my fault. You know, maybe he's got to shrink that house four, six feet, three feet on each side to make it to bring it into bounds. But that's just me. Mr. Gavias, comments?
Well, I I'm obviously, I said, told you before, I was more upset about this than I did. If the board wants to let him withdraw, I I would go along with that.
Okay.
However, I also understand that he already has the variance that he could use.
Yep.
And so, you know, if he draws a lot of prejudice, he's going to go talk to the neighbors, I guess, but he's going to end up with desk or something probably. And I'm not sure if we should be allowing that either. So I, you know, I I I'm on the fence on this one, but I'm leaning towards denying it.
Okay. Uh, Charlie? Charlie?
Yeah, I won't be voting in favor of what's proposed here at all. As far as the other issue with letting him withdraw or voting against it, it doesn't matter to me. I feel as though if he withdraws it, it's done, he's not going to bring anything back that looks similar to this. He knew what he was buying, it was a modest home and a modest lot.
Right.
So, and he said he was aware and he just took a shot figuring that maybe it would go through not knowing the history. Again, I'll make the argument that I'd let him withdraw if that was what we felt as though he should do.
Okay, Mr. Chin?
I, this just, the whole thing smells from the very beginning when the original owner first came before us and there were misrepresentations made.
The whole thing.
I'm not going to go as hard as saying they were fraudulent, but in hindsight now it certainly looks like there are misrepresentations made, we're living with those. We granted that original owner a variance. Now we're dealing with a second owner who wants to expand on the variance. I don't think it's right to waste the time of a lot of people tonight and the lot of good work that was done by the neighbors in terms of providing information and background to us so that we can make an informed decision. So unquestionably, I would vote no tonight to the proposal that's before the board. And I would strongly consider requiring adherence to the first variance.
Okay, Mr. Himmel.
I would vote no, obviously, for this two and a half stories. And I also would vote no to withdraw it. It just, it seems to be a tremendous waste of time to go and bother the neighbors to try to get them to accept something that they don't want. I would say that this should just revert to one and a half story or what he could build by right.
All right, so we got, I'm here to vote no. One, anyone else that's Mr. Himmel?
Yeah.
No.
I would no also, buddy.
You're going to vote no?
Yeah.
Yeah. Can we have a motion just to focus down, get rid of it?
It's the Chairman Amendment number 21-53, Hardy Adman Design Group for a variance finding to construct a two and a half story building on existing nonconforming lot which received variances in ZBA case number Z19-40 for 1.5 story building on apprentice number 186 Essex Street. I make a motion to deny the variance.
Second.
Adam Clark, can we have a voice vote?
Mike Cavais?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
John Himmel?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
And Marty Aiken?
Yes. Thank you, everybody. Sorry we had to go through that. Further into tonight's business. ZBA 2160, Jacob Grohman for a finding to add a second floor in existing structure and small two-story addition in the back of the house, 89 Billings Street. The African representative here.
I'm here, Jacob Grohman.
Jacob, can you take an oath, please?
Yes, sir.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you guys?
I do.
Thank you.
You have the floor.
So speaking on behalf of the Gillan family, they are requesting a finding for, to add a second story, to essentially add additional living space to the current house that's there that's only 664 square feet. Again, they're going to add the second floor as well as a 14-foot by 12-foot addition in the back, two stories as well. Their parents also live with them currently. They have a finished basement and, you know, with everything that's happened with COVID and the age of their parents, they want to keep the whole family together. And so they are asking for this finding to be able to expand the current house and all stay together.
All right, and you're just going up to, same side, same on the foundation, up a story and then the back, you're putting a bedroom and a bath?
Yeah, yeah, and we're only changing the footprint in the back.
Correct.
Yep.
And you're trying to bring it out a little bit in the same angle as the home, correct?
Correct, yep.
I have no further questions. Mr. Cavais, any questions?
I have no questions.
Mr. O'Brien, any questions? Mr. Himmel?
No questions.
Mr. Chin?
No questions.
All right, is there anyone that would like to speak in favor? First call? Second call?
Citizen Rodafell has hand.
Citizen Rodafell, is there any correspondence? Citizens, you're under oath.
John Rodafell, 62 Grandwall Road. Yeah, just from looking at the street, I mean, there's a bigger house on the left, a bigger house on the right. This is just a small house, it's very dense housing up on Billings Street. I think this fits in fine, just I'm in favor of this, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who want to speak in favor? Second call? Third call? Call our party hearing closed, I have a letter here, DPW, August 9th, 89 Billings Street, case number 2160. We review this middle, have no comments. Or anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? Second call? I have one question for you. What's the height of that when you're done?
Roughly 32 feet, 31.68 feet.
All right, all right. Third call? Call our party hearing closed. I'll be voting in favor. Mr. Cavais?
I'll be voting in favor.
Mr. O'Brien?
Likewise, a nice fit up there.
Mr. Chin?
Yes, I'm in favor.
Mr. Himmel? Mr. Himmel? He's frozen.
Frozen.
Okay, Michael Cavais, can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman Amendment number 21-60, Jacob Grohman for a finding to add a second floor to the existing structure in a small two-story addition on the back of the house on the premises number 89 Billings Street. I make a motion to grant the finding.
Second.
On the motion, if we could have none, Madam Quirk, we have a voice vote, please.
Mike Cavais?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
John Himmel?
John's not here right now, but we'll get to him.
And Marty?
Yes. So it's four to whatever, Mr. Himmel, so it passes. John, you there? He just, he's logging in again. Thank you. Further into tonight, Jacob Grohman for variance to construct a second story addition on premise 74 Raycroft Street. You're under oath, go ahead, you have the floor.
Okay, for this one, I'm speaking on behalf of the Grealish family for the property located at 74 Raycroft Street. Basically the same idea, they're a growing family, they currently have two kids and a third on the way and looking to add a second story to their current home.
Thank you. Could you please hold right there? Mr. Himmel, we're waiting on your vote, last vote?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
For this, there is no, for 74 Raycroft, there is no change to the footprint at all, just going up a second story. And the reason we're seeking the variance is for the floor area ratio. It is currently .4 and it, we're asking that it go up to .56. And that's because the basement will also be finished, it is currently finished and will remain finished. So that's what brings up the floor area ratio to the .56.
And.
As far as the street goes, the houses on either side of them are also just one and a half stories right now. However, there are additional houses on the street that, there's plenty of houses on the street that are two and a half stories on Raycroft.
Now, I know it's a one-family home right now.
Correct.
And they're keeping it as a one-family home.
Yes, sir, yeah.
So if they needed something later, putting all this in, I just wanted to make sure, I didn't want to change it to a two at the same time, okay.
Nope.
Was it Mike?
No additional parking.
Mr. O'Brien, any questions?
How many bedrooms now and how many bedrooms when you're done?
There is two bedrooms now and there'll be four bedrooms when they're done. One for them and then one each for their three children.
I got a plan here that shows there's four bedrooms on the second floor alone.
The, yeah, the plans weren't updated, but that bedroom on the first floor?
Yeah.
Is, it's going to be a completely open floor plan on the first floor, that bedroom will not be there.
Okay, and down in the basement, there's no bedrooms, it's just finished?
Correct, no bedrooms, no bedrooms.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cavais?
I have no question.
Mr. Chin?
I have the same questions as Charlie because the plans show a lot of bedrooms on different floors.
Right, and they changed it. There's an open floor plan downstairs on the first floor, stay tuned.
Yeah, they'd originally wanted to keep that as potentially a guest bedroom.
Yeah.
But we've since, they've since decided that we're just going to open up that whole entire first floor.
It's going to be wide open, so there is not going to be a room there, correct?
Correct, yep.
Correct, that room is gone.
All right, I have no other questions.
Thank you. Mr. Himmel?
That was my same question, thank you, Charlie.
Anytime, John.
No bedrooms in the basement, no bedrooms on the first floor, four on the second floor.
Correct.
Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor? First call? Second call? Anybody?
No here.
All that closed? Any correspondence, none? Just have another letter here, 74 Raycroft, ZBA 2161, we reviewed the above referenced middle and have no comments. Is there anyone opposed or undecided? Opposed or undecided? First call? Second call? Anyone?
No hand.
All right, third call closed. I'll be voting in favor, Mr.?
You're voting in favor.
Likewise.
Chin?
In favor.
And Mr. Himmel?
In favor.
We have a motion, please.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Amendment number 21-61, Jacob Grohman for a variance to construct a second story addition on the premises number 74 Raycroft Street. I make a motion to grant the variance.
Second.
On the motion, Madam Quirk, can we have a voice vote, please?
Mike Cavais?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
John Himmel?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
Marty Aiken?
Yes. Further into tonight, ZBA 2163, Frederick Looper Sunpower. Well, hold on one minute, I want to see if these other people are back here before we get into the project. It was 2142 70 Carlisle Street, correct? Is there anyone here? The 70 Carlisle Street? Nice little project they're putting in the back there, it's simple, too. Okay, I guess not, I guess we're in the end and we'll get more and more call. ZBA 2163, Frederick Looper Sunpower Corporation for special permit, special flood plane to install solar photovoltaic carport system with the parking lot compromised approximately, price of approximately $7,460. Panels mounted at the top, four parking canopies numbered 1776 Heritage Drive, is the African representative here.
Yes.
Are you a lawyer?
No, I'm not.
Could you take an oath, please?
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you guys?
I do.
Name an address for the record, please?
This is Frederick Looper, I live at 53 Mount Vernon Street, North Reading, Massachusetts, 0186.
I've just got a couple of questions, there's a couple, you said it was local 130, you meant local 103 was doing that work?
Correct, yes.
And it wasn't five, 3.2 kilowatts, it was 3.2 megawatts from State Street, is that correct?
3.27 megawatts DC, it's slightly less AC.
Yeah, I know, exactly. Okay, you have the floor.
Actually, this is a quick introduction, I'm Fred Looper, project manager for the project at Sunpower. I have my colleagues, my civil engineering consultants here, Robert Bukowski and Megan McAllister, they can answer the board's questions on this specific zoning and other permitting questions.
Hi, everyone. Rob Bukowski with Western Sampson, I'm also not a lawyer.
All right, could you take an oath, please?
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you guys?
I do.
Thank you.
Hey, so thank you, everyone. So we're here tonight about proposed, three proposed solar PV carport structures at the parking lot of the State Street Bank facility. It is located in the business C, Central Business District, and this will be in accessory use, meaning all the power will be used by the facility. So because it's an accessory use in this district, we're requesting a special permit approval. And in addition, it's also in the floodplain overlay district, requiring special permit approval as well. We did go in front of the Conservation Commission two weeks ago for a request for determination of applicability because some of the foundation locations are inside the floodplain, and they did give us a negative determination. Everything proposed here is going to be within the parking area, the foundation locations are there, there'll be some trenching, but it's basically, you know, existing developed area that the project is proposed in.
And, I mean, I looked at the drawings, I liked what I saw and I really wish, like Stop &amp; Shop and all these places would do the same thing. I mean, it's talk about a waste. Sun, 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 boring nothing, even in the winter. Take half the, three quarters of the snow off you and everything else, getting to your car and everything else. I think what you're building here is really something that should be done by a lot of companies. I hope people are paying attention to what you're doing here. I don't have any questions on it because I read the drawings, I looked at your plans, I'm an electrician myself, this is what I do. I was the one that made all the laws in this state, you guys installed all this stuff with the senators of this state. Mr. Cavais, any questions?
I don't, I don't, I mean, how high off the ground is this going to be? I do have a question, how high off the ground is this, these structures going to be?
Fred, do you want to take that? I think it's between 13 and 16 feet, is that right?
I have it actually pulled up. The minimum clearance underneath the drive aisles will be, of course, 13 and 6. And then the maximum height that we're looking at, I have it pulled up, just one moment. Maximum height is 18 feet 9 inches at Array 4. And then the rest of the heights, of course, follow the average grade, so they will be less.
Thank you.
That's bigger than the Stereotide Bridges, I think.
Definitely, you can drive a U-Haul underneath this.
How deep you go with your excavation?
Current design has nine-foot deep foundations for most of the site, nine-foot caps of the drilling. There will be a driven pile that will go further down to refusal. There are deeper foundations in the site to protect some underground utilities that There are deeper foundations in the site to protect some underground utilities that go down to 19 feet. But those are, I believe, one quarter of the foundations that have that. That's the excavated foundation.
Okay, the reason I'm asking is because the history in that area over there, that, that land over there sinks and floats and swims, and Newport Ave over there's been a disaster. That's, can you, can you assure us that that won't happen in the parking lot? With your excavation and your piles and stuff, that it won't be any giveaway and it'll sink?
We did significant geotechnical investigation out on site, probably, I think, starting maybe last winter. And we did, we did a number of boreholes that went down as deep as, I think, 40, 50, or 60 feet. So, you know, that's a key part in the foundations for these structures, is evaluating the soil, making sure that the foundation design is appropriate for the onsite conditions.
Okay, what kind of weight, how much do these things weigh?
If that's an answer that the board wishes, it's a question I'll have to ask my structural engineers. I know that my steel is, the steel for the columns and the crossbeams is 276 tons spread across all four arrays. There's other components as well, but that's a, that's a very detailed structural question. I finish.
All right, thank you. Mr. Chin?
Questions. Will the, will the panels be lowered so that they'll be rotating in relation to the sun, or will it be stationary?
They will be stationary. They're fixed tilt in two different directions at this time, our way of design.
And will there be any plans for electrical vehicle charging stations located in that area?
Not at this time, no. The client has not pressed a bet.
Come on, guys, get with the program. Come on, come on.
I got to sell, I got to sell them here right first, sir.
There's money, there's money. We're all paying for this charging station, all of us. So come on, get some money from the grid. Let's go.
So this is Mike LaRosa. I'm with the State Street. There are charging stations we just installed in that site. We have 18 charging stations.
See? Where'd you get the money, Mike?
Well, most, part of it from National Grid, but most of it came from State Street.
Now, I know that, I know that, but they pay for the electricity and the other, and that's where we put that money into that funds slot. Mr. Himmel, any questions?
Oh, I think it's a great idea. There's one down here in Falmouth in a relatively small marketplace that's worked out well with south-facing canopies, and there's no problem with them. That's a good job for Local 103, too, so.
Yeah, it's a nice job. These guys will like it. Thank you. Is there anyone that wants to speak in favor? First call? Second call?
Citizen Rodafell.
Citizen Rodafell. You're under oath, John.
Thank you. I just want to say, I think this is great. I'm in favor of green energy. We could use more of this, like you said. And my question, I did have one question about the project. Is the panel going to be connected to a power wall where you'll be saving the energy or not?
If you're referring to the Tesla product power wall, a battery system, currently not at this time, no.
Okay, okay.
Who's on site?
That's it. I'm in favor of this, and good luck with your project.
Thank you, John. Anyone else want to speak in favor? Second call? Third call? Call up power. I have, we'll call up power hearing. I have a letter here from DPW, 1776 Heritage Drive, ZBA 2163. We reviewed this middle of the above referenced project and have no comments, but there will be many later for you guys. Anyone opposed or undecided? First call? Second call? Anything up, John?
No hands.
All right, third call, call up power hearing closed. I'll be voting in favor.
I'm voting in favor, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. O'Brien?
Nice work. I'll be in favor.
Chin?
I have one last question, if I may. Mr. Chairman, in terms of glare, have any studies on glare to a butter or anything like that coming off of the structure?
It's too short of a, of a ray as it's tipping, so it, it's not going to, no, not down in the back down there. I mean, if you're in the middle of, middle of high-rise, yeah, depends where you got the wind is in your buildings, but no.
We, we did do a glare study and submitted that through FAA, and we just got notification yesterday, I believe, that there was no effect.
Thank you. I'm in favor.
Mr. Himmel?
I'm in favor. One quick question. Frederick, is this, this is direct use, correct?
Yeah, this time the array has actually a non-export system designed. However, even without that non-export system, the building load is actually more than what the array will produce at this time.
Great. Thank you.
As fast as it's made, it sucks it right up. There you go. Can I have a motion, please?
Mr. Chairman, Amendment Number 21-63, Frederick Looper Sunpower Corporation for a special permit, special permit floodplain to install solar carport system with the parking lot, price was approximately $7,460 panel modules mounted atop four individually parking canopies, the premises number 1776 Heritage Drive, and make a motion to grant these special permits.
Second.
On the motion, seeing none, Madam Quirk, can I have a voice vote, please?
Michael Kavias?
Yes.
Charlie O'Brien?
Yes.
John Himmel?
Yes.
Russell Chin?
Yes.
Marty Aiken?
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Last call? 70 Carlisle Street. Is there anyone here? I think someone forgot to log on. Madam Quirk, if you could write them a letter, please, and ask them to get in touch with you. Do you want to move this to for a month? Nick, I'm looking, something happened, something could have happened to him. Is that fair enough, what you think, guys?
Yep.
Yeah, I agree.
Charlie, can I make a motion for a month? What's the meeting in September 20, what?
28?
28?
The meeting is 14 through the 28th.
Yes, 28. There you go.
Mr. Chairman, Amendment Number 21-42. I'm trying to try to say the name either, for special permit floodplain variance finding to construct a one-story addition and roof deck on the premises number 70 Carlisle Street, and make a motion to, he's going to hear September 28th.
Second.
On the motion, seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Close, so move. Gentlemen, thank you very much. We have a motion adjourned?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, second, and all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Later, guys.